Morning, everyone.
All the meeting to order. Looking for approval of the agenda.
So move if there is no deletions, corrections, or additions.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval of minutes. We'll do two motions on this one. The first one is the Monday, July seventh meeting.
So moved second that.
We have a motion and a second for July seventh. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Now, one for July fourteenth. Last week.
I'll make a motion to approve you.
You weren't here. Oh, well, I was halfway.
That's true.
Well, wait, someone else can make a second.
I'll I'll second the first set of meetings minutes.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second for July fourteenth. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. New business. Text my gov presentation. And somebody is supposed to be joining us on Zoom. Quarter is not here for number two yet. So there's a Landon Beck on here.
He could go to item number three.
I was gonna say, yeah, he's, I see him on here, Landon Beck.
Yeah, hi, this is, this is Landon Beck. I was um, um, scheduled to uh, just introduce text my gov. Uh, so whatever you guys are ready for that, just let me know. I'll just, I'll just stay on mute until you guys are ready for that presentation.
We are ready for you. You were first on the agenda, so go ahead and start your presentation.
Okay. Great. Well, I appreciate the time. I just want to um, be uh, respectful of the time allotted. Uh, how, am I, am I okay for roughly five minutes then?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, um, text my gov, um, just a quick background on us. Uh, it's designed uh, to, for government agencies to communicate with their citizens. Um, it's a two-way communication cool tool, so you guys could actually send information out. Residents can also use our program to ask questions and, and report issues and, and find information. Um, and our program has uh, originally launched in, in twenty nineteen and we're currently in over a thousand government agencies currently. Um, and the, the idea today is just to give you a, a high level overview of how our program works and how other counties have, have used our program. And uh, we'll go from there. So uh, are you guys able to uh, do a screen share or should I, is it just gonna be? Just uh, a, a one-way uh, presentation here?
We're checking on share, on share on the screen.
Okay.
But just so you're aware, we do have your presentation in front of us. So if we, air screen, you can probably go through it that way.
Okay. Alright, so um, yeah, if you have the presentation in front of you, um, I'll just kind of start with that second page there, how we're, we're, we're centered around helping um, increase government uh, or citizen engagement. Do you guys see that, that uh, you guys have that second page there then?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so um, if you uh, page, so if you hop over to page uh, three, that, we do have a list of, of, of benefits uh, where I'd like to start with. Um, it, it's a simple tool to use for counties to send out alerts. Uh, the county would actually log into our web-based dashboard uh, to launch all of our alerts. So none of our, none of our texts, you'd actually have to utilize an actual cell phone. You would log into our backend program to send out um, all, all these text alerts. Um, some of our benefits of doing this, um, it boosts website traffic. It's a modern form of communication, uh, streamlines work processes and cuts down on calls. Uh, to sign up for text my gov, it doesn't require any apps, downloads, or accounts. Uh, residents would just opt in via a website widget we provide on your homepage. And they, they would simply just type in their number to join the county. From there, the county is able to set up notification groups. They can do it by department or by, by topic or citizen interest. So uh, citizens can actually, you know, subscribe to, to what groups that interest them or what departments they, they want to hear from. Or they could simply opt into all county-wide alerts. Uh, the other way that uh, we help out with um, signing people up is our database import. Uh, our database import is, is purchased through the USPS. Typically, what we see is we're able to enroll roughly fifty percent of all households with the, with this program. So based on your population of, of uh, just over twenty thousand, um, just going off estimates, we'd be able to pro, to um, get in that realm of fifty percent of households enrolled in the program automatically. So what they would receive is a text message, you know, welcome into the program. Letting them know that this is how you're gonna communicate with them. If they don't want to be a part of the program, they just have to hit stop. Typically, our, our in, our database import, um, we see about ninety percent do, you know, stay in the program. So it's a really high um, opt-in process that we can provide there. Um, and that gives you just at least a head start on who you're notifying through our program. And then the rest can, can simply just opt in um, just by texting it, just by putting their number in their website or texting a phone number we provide you guys. Um, and just some other um, benefits of the county, uh, if you go to um, page four there. Um, it just gives you kind of a rundown of features we provide. Uh, we provide that mass text notification tool. Each department can have their own um, um, notification group to run. So it doesn't have to be run by one or two individuals. We could set up as many users as you guys want. We do have a map tool that allows the county, if um, if they ever need to message a particular area of the county, you could target by address and by area, and you could send messages directly to those residents. Like, for example, a lot of highway departments utilize it to notify of road construction or maybe black ice has been reported, flooding. Uh, there's, there is situations where it's helpful just to notify residents in a certain region and not necessarily alert the whole county. And our map tool provides that functionality. Um, just some common use cases for notifications. Um, we could help out with news and events or uh, board meetings, elections, taxes, office closures, road updates and, and emergency, emergency management. Typically, uh, we do see a lot of counties do have some type of emergency program set up. Um, our program can supplement that, but uh, we can also help out with those, those general items that listed above, where you can notify citizens on, on um, on, on all those other items outside of just emergencies. Uh, we do provide automated text responses. So if residents were to ask a question like, you know, when are taxes due or early voting or, or, you know, when's the next board meeting? We do provide automated replies to where um, if those keywords do get texted in. Uh, they, they would receive those automated responses and, and help you guys cut down on phone calls. Um, and our, our tool is available twenty-four seven, so our residents can text in anytime. Uh, really helpful when, you know, perhaps you guys are closed or it's, you know, a holiday, there's still a way for them to access, you know, information from your county and, and, and uh, receive, receive help. Uh, we did add some new items this year where you could share any text notification with Facebook pages. We do provide an unlimited survey tool and we just added weather alerts um, as of two months ago. So those are some new items that we've, we've added to our program. Uh, citizen benefits, uh, it's a simple form of communication, high engagement, and they receive timely alerts and updates via text message. Uh, lastly, why texting? Uh, here are some stats that are, are really helpful on, on why texting so effective. Uh, over ninety-eight percent of households own a cell phone and they use texting daily. Uh, user engagement, text messages are often read within the first ninety seconds and have a ninety-five percent open rate. Uh, convenience, it does reduce, reduce the reliance on just using social media, mailers, and email. Uh, access, you'll be able to connect with your residents wherever they are instantly. So, uh, text messaging is a very powerful tool to get information out quickly. And the, the, the engagement is, is, is much higher than, than uh, than, than email or social media posts where, uh, perhaps the message goes unread or unseen. Text messages are almost always, you know, seen as soon as they come in. So that really is just a high-level overview of, of how our program can be utilized for a county. And if there is any questions, I'll, I'll turn it over uh, to the board for, for, for those.
So what is your basic startup fee, the um, the basic package?
Yeah, so uh, countywide, based on your population. Um, I can just give you an, an estimate right here. So is, is twenty thousand or just over twenty thousand a, a good population to go off of?
Yeah.
Okay. So uh, twenty thousand, the, the base package, you guys would be uh, about um, six thousand total for the entire county to, to utilize the program. If you get up to what's called our premium, which has some of those features like, like the, like the weather alerts, for example, you'll be closer to um, that eight thousand range.
So who would access to, like, would the sheriff, if there was a road closure, be able to have um, access to put something on this or the communication center or how many um, not read only, but how many um, edit licenses? Would that?
Yeah, good question. So if you guys do the, the uh, if you guys implement this, we would, we would give uh, any user or department that you want access to the program and, and that's no additional cost. So e- each department can, we, we could train as many users as you guys want and each department would have the same access.
And I assume this is an annual fee?
It is an annual fee. Um, we do start out with a three-year contract. After three years, if you guys want to continue the program, it does revert to year to year.
Okay, so I have a question. Um,
Sure.
So right now, we have to, and obviously, you know, I support local things, but we have to do a lot of advertising and news releases and a lot of the papers. Have you talked to legislators or other counties that have implemented this and then get, went away from having to, you know, do minutes and public notices um, through the newspapers? Can't?
Yeah, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No.
If you haven't, I, I mean, even if we don't go with you guys, it would be a good step for you in the next direction for your company to to reach out to legislators that this could be a new form of communication and letting the public know.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's a great idea. We, we do uh, we do attend a lot of um, conventions and, and talk to a, a, a lot of um, groups to promote our program. Um, and as far as like personalizing uh, like helping your specific county promote the program. Um, we do provide a, a, a marketing kit that has, you know, social media flyers, QR codes. Uh, we do provide press releases. Um, we, we cater the, we cater all the marketing to your needs. And we could help market the program, you know, individually specifically for you to help get signups. But in general, yeah, we, we uh, we do uh, we do attend a lot of events and, and promote our program the best we can to, to get, you know, uh, presentations like this, just to notify um, you know, counties that, that may not have heard of us, that, that, that this is an option. But if this is something you guys were interested in, we would cater specific marketing um, campaigns just for you, just to, just to help you, you know, increase your signups. Um, but as, but as far as uh, what you would start out with, uh, you guys would have a nice head start in having like, you know, half your county enrolled. And then the rest, we could help out with, with that marketing program I told you. So.
How many counties in the state of Iowa do you have?
Um, yeah, if you give me just one minute, I, I know uh, um, as far as, um, it's not a county, but Fort Dodge currently would probably be our biggest user of, of the program currently. Uh, other counties that use us, um, so we have Washington County, um, we have Hamilton County, Mitchell County, Cherokee County. Um, and then we have a lot of, you know, other smaller municipalities like, like, likes, like uh, for, for example, Gutenberg, Springville, Preston. Uh, but Fort Dodge would currently probably be, probably our biggest user in the county or in the, in the state right now.
So I see you're based out of Utah. Is there other? Who's your competitors?
Um, we're a sole-source product, so our technology is, is very unique that uh, there, as far as texting goes, we're, we're, we're the only two-way texting option currently available. But I would say our biggest competitors would be um, with counties, the, the, they're more, the programs we compete with are more designed for emergency management, like your Everbridge is Code Red. Um, I know, I, I know, I, I, I know uh, Iowa uses Alert Iowa for emergencies a lot. Um, but as far as two-way communication for general information, we're a sole-source provider. And we can provide you a letter regarding that. Uh, so there really is, our, our program is really unique that um, we do have competitors, but there's really not a similar tech, technology to us currently out there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What, what does it cost? What does it cost to add more users on there? The ten thousand, say we need fifteen thousand, what does that?
Oh, doesn't cost anymore. It doesn't cost any, if you pay for the program, we could sign up as many users as you want.
No, you said ten thousand out of the twenty, I'm just curious.
Wish we could get it.
Oh, I was just saying, oh, I was just saying, oh, you're talking about the database import. Um, we're only able to import citizens that have provided their cell phone numbers with USPS. So what we, what, what counties have done is initially, they, they start with our first database import. If you guys want to do another one down the road, uh, that's, that's, that, that's roughly, you know, another five, six hundred dollars, you know, each time we do that. So if you guys want to check the database again a year, a year from now, that's what you'd be looking at as additional five, six hundred dollars. So I misunderstood that question at the fir, at the start, but yeah, that, that's how you would, you would have us run our, first time we cover it, the cost, but the next time we run it is about five, six hundred bucks.
That's unlimited, so we got another five thousand people want to be on it, just costs us five hundred bucks.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Courtney, do you think you would use it, your, the first floor would use it for like, sometimes the treasurer's office is closed for training where the whole office is closed?
I, I can't answer it for them, but I would use it for elections.
For.
I was gonna say.
Early in-person voting starts today.
It's pretty, it's a pretty phenomenal like, concept, to be honest.
Well, I know, last week I asked Jason about Highway seventy-one being closed and there was no notice from, I don't believe from the comm center, but the Carroll PD put it out on Facebook, but I think a text, and we get them. I know for the
Amul.
And the weather.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, when he said he could target an area, a lot of times it'll be northeastern Carroll County is under a severe thunderstorm watch. So instead of the whole county getting notified, the people live in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a really common, that, what you just described is what we see a lot of uh, bigger municipalities and counties utilize. Uh, the map tool for is, a lot of times you don't need to alert everybody for every situation. Sometimes it needs to be more targeted and personalized and our map tool will give you that flexibility.
Also, you know, it could be utilized, I mean, if you're talking the treasurer, it could be utilized for property taxes.
Exactly.
You know, the assessor.
I think it's, it's more public access that could come from this board also. Um, yeah, I think the more the public knows, the better, and they can opt out by typing stop if they don't want to get the, the text messages that Courtney sends out when early voting starts, if they don't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're exactly right. We want to make it as simple to opt out as opting in. We don't want to make it, well, you gotta come to this page and uncheck all your groups and, and we don't want to make it painful to get out. It's a simple stop and they're opted out of every message. So.
You uh, can you send us an actual hard copy quote?
Yeah.
The next step, if, if we were to do, I think we would need to meet with our communication center and maybe
Yeah.
Department heads, that before we were to.
And a list of the, of the counties and municipalities that are utilizing the state of.
Sure. Sure, yeah.
My next.
There was uh, six thousand for a base cost, and then you said it costs another five hundred dollars to do the database. So let's say we initially sign up and somebody doesn't get on. Can we add individuals? Can they add on to this without going through that five hundred dollar database?
Yeah, so the first, the first database poll was included in that initial cost. Um, if you go, like, if, and then anybody else that's not in that database, um, will help market the program too, or they could, you'll see uh, if you guys can see my screens, can you, can you get, were you guys able to see my screen at all?
No.
Okay, I'll uh, if you go to Fort Dodge's website, you'll see their, their text my gov signup box right on their homepage. And I'll send you the link here after as well.
So in the bit, can, can sign up to get on to it without?
Yeah, yeah, they don't have to be in the database. They could certainly join by opting in either, either through the website or we, we provide a ten-digit number to text into. They would just simply text the word hi to join. Um, and then, like I said, we can also provide uh, QR codes, social media posts. We provide a variety of ways for residents to sign up. But that database is just to give you a head start. Like, we, 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 it's, it's tough to pay for a program and start at zero and gather signups where you guys would instantly have, you know, forty, fifty percent of your county enrolled. Now we can help you market it uh, to the rest and get them signed up. So. But I'll send over us, um, municipalities like Fort Dodge. It's, it's right on their homepage. They have a really nice press release uh, that they, they've put out. Um, and uh, I'll per, it, it's, they'd be a good example on how uh, they promoted the program.
So on their webpage, is it under get notified where you can just hit the page alerts?
Yes, it, it's just on the bottom right-hand corner. It's, it says text my gov, find and report issues, text hi to get started. Or if you click learn more, um, it takes you to their page where you could choose what, what you want to be notified of. Uh, the notification aspect of it. Um, or, or also it gives you the option just to type the number right in their website and they're, they're enrolled. So that's another nice feature is we don't require residents to, to, to download any more apps to their phone. They don't have to create another account. Um, it's just a simple text in to join. So they're not having to, to go through the, I know a lot of, a not, a lot of issues other uh, notification programs run into is once residents start signing up, that it, it requires so much information, they just, you know, they just stop it, enrolling. This is just a simple text. So we, we've removed like kind of the pain of signing up for something with, with the way they do it.
Something new, Zach?
We have ways of communicating that way through our service.
But as far as like if um, for a bridge replacement, if you were gonna say construction is expected these dates, could you target just the people in the Ralston area or Coon Rapids area?
We, we developed a database of like the, of the entities around there, but it's basically what we're giving us their information, same reason for, for here.
Yep.
Whoever would provide their, their cell phone or email, they can get on that, on that list and it would go out to them as well. So it's really about as good as the data that you have with people that have entered into the system.
Oh, I think the next steps are, yeah, the references of other counties that have it, and then an actual quote, if you could send that to Courtney.
And then for our having elected officials, department heads all get together.
Me, do, yeah, we need to do some homework on our end.
Well, taking the time and explaining this to, to the board.
Yeah, I'll get that information sent over and then I guess I'll, I'll get with Courtney on um, next steps. On if you guys need any follow-up presentations and discussions, I'm happy to present the program, you know, more personalized to departments that uh, that see interest as well. Uh, that way they could actually see like our, the backend portion of the program and how easy it is to operate. So I'll, I'll just kind of run all those, all those next steps with Courtney.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, hey, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Item number two. Approve county recorder quarterly report and annual report. Good morning, Ashton.
Morning, Ashton.
What's this? That mic might not be on. Push the button. Hold it down.
Is it on? No.
It looks like it, is it?
Yeah. Uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five quarter for recorders report, the county fees are down to three thousand dollars. That is mainly just coming in a revenue stamp, so that's just doesn't necessarily affect the amount of transactions we've done, but just the, maybe with a big sale last year or smaller sales this year, just the tax collected. It was a boat renewal year, so we were busy that way. Let me find that line. That was a, you know, fifteen hundred, so we keep two dollars of that transaction, so we were up, you know, had a more than double transactions from last year on the boat renewals. And on the quarterly, the state side, same idea. The revenue standard down, just the price of sales. That we collected on that. And then the river's registration fees, that amount goes to the state, and that's quite a bit more with the boat renewals season year that happened. Or this quarter. And then the fiscal year report is kind of just right on track with those same comments in mind as far as the yearly total. Are there any questions on anything specifically?
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need a motion? Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the quarterly. We can do it in one, I think, quarterly and annual.
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly and annual.
One second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ashton, thank you.
You carries.
Item number four, tax or approved tax suspension list.
Need three?
Huh?
Item number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, approve fiscal year twenty-five county substance abuse grant year-end report. This is from new opportunities. Is a lot of numbers there. Comments on it, Gene?
This figure's been the same for years. I mean, it's just a, it's a substance abuse contract that we get from the state. And we have to match uh, we get thirty-five hundred dollars from the state. And we match ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. Our total grant that we sub-contract with new opportunities for fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. And it's been basically that way for years, so.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the fiscal year twenty-five county substance abuse grant year-end report.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Now, item number four.
Who had the second? That beeping was?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Mike seconded it.
I don't know why that keeps doing.
Sure, it's alright, whatever.
My crazy second.
Mike, I think.
They did it last week too, Courtney.
I know.
I think it's a felt fire thing.
It's what? I don't know, yeah. Well, it's just a little beep that goes off that probably coming out of that red box, but. Um, item number four, approved tax suspension list. Looks like we have one property on here. When the tax suspension is, um, Courtney, do you want to explain?
Oh.
When, when the property sells, the county will be repaid.
Right, so this individual um, requested the suspension. Um, they are eligible based on information we got from DHS. So the taxes would be suspended once property sold, or they choose to pay them. They will get paid, so it doesn't forgive them, it just suspends them.
Yep. Um, it seems like in years past, there's been several on here.
Yeah.
That have just one.
We've already approved the initial list. This is kind of a late, a late one, but since the taxes haven't been sent out yet, we can still do this one.
Okay.
So we already did the initial ones.
Yeah, that's why, okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve this one. So we're looking for a motion to approve this one.
All second.
We have a motion in a second to add one to the list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item number five, manure management updates. Pig Haven, section fourteen, Glidden Township, annual report. Antover Family Farms, section thirty two, Viola Township, Ottoman County, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Franklin Pork, section five, Franklin Township, Green County, annual report. Joey Shown, section twenty nine, Jasper Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Stone Path three, section twenty three, Pleasant Valley Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Meyer three, section fourteen, Sheridan Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Laverne Graving Site, section thirty four, Pleasant Valley Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Justin Schrader, section thirty three, Wheatland Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Easton Feedlots, section six, Jackson Township, Green County, annual report. Richland Custom Farms Home Site, section twenty one, Richland Township, no changes. Richland Customs Farm East Site, section twenty four, Richland Township, no changes. Delta Pork, section thirty three, Arcadia Township, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Dennis and Bill Venami Livestock Farm, section twenty five, Wheatland Township, annual report. AE Pork, section thirty two, Maple River Township, annual report. Item number six is committee reports.
I go first. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
I'll go next. Last week I had the newspaper radio, and then um I fielded quite a bit of phone calls on some of the items we had on our agenda. And conversations, and then I did attend the chamber coffee at Allen Distributing, which was a wonderful turnout because there's seventy fifth. Mike Anderson was there, so I'll just go ahead and report that for him.
And he probably took two Apex.
Yeah, and this week I do not have any official meetings.
Last week, Tuesday, um executive committee at the landfill, we did sign an agreement with the city of Ames to start taking their trash two years from now. Not Story County, but the city of Ames. Then at noon was CCGP meeting. Wednesday, I had a complaint on grain seventy seven washout on the southeast corner of US thirty and Grant. Zach met me there. There's a couple of them in the old subway parking lot. And um I believe. Um. You're gonna be addressing those. Thursday, I did talk with the county attorney and Zach about a future road use agreement that'll be coming to us. Friday was Allen Distributing seventy five year anniversary chamber coffee. And I did speak with um. Uh Courtney at ISAC about a ninety nine county tour. They're coming August twelfth from nine to ten thirty. They'll be sending us an invite on that, but I think they want to hit all ninety nine counties and. Listen to concerns or I think they have a program they put on then question and answer. Also, Friday I did ride with the new deputy sheriff. This week, today I have newspaper and radio, RSVP at eleven thirty. And at one o'clock, the Daily Times Herald. Um, I'm meeting them out the the landfill. They want to do an interview at the recycling center. I think it's about Ames trash coming this way. Um, Tuesday is Farm Bureau Annual Meeting in Brita. Wednesday, RSVP appreciation lunch in in Dennison. And then is it claims week next week, Courtney?
Yes.
So Thursday will be out of roads and Friday a courthouse claims.
Can you back up with?
Yep.
The Farm Bureau, what?
It's Tuesday night in Brita.
Yep.
That's what I said, what did I say?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. I didn't get one. They called me and they said, did you get the postcard? And I said, I did not.
Hell, they weren't.
I got one.
I got.
Didn't you hand them out down here?
Uh, I don't remember, sorry.
I think they were down here.
I think they're down here.
Yeah. Huh, okay, I don't. I didn't. Yeah, I got a phone call from them because usually I go to it and I didn't respond, so.
No, I think they were on our table like just like these packets here.
Anyway, it's in breed at six o'clock, Stephanie, choose to go.
Um. How much trash is Ames a year? How many, how many mountains?
How many what?
Mountains.
Um. I have it in my minutes. I can tell you afterwards. Um. I think it's um. Yeah, I'll tell you. That's my, can't look up right now, but it's a lot and um it probably. I mean, the negotiations have been going on for a long time, so Ames currently, their trash, they take it to Boone County landfill. Boone County landfill is rapidly getting full, so Boone County notified the city of Ames. That they no longer could take them as their biggest customer, so then the city of Ames, they're gonna have to build a transfer station. Because this will be coming by semi.
Yep.
Instead of by garbage trucks, which I think the Ames, the municipalities, I think Ames has like four haulers or five haulers. Um. Ames also does not currently have curbside recycling. I think they're gonna be required to do that because we don't want to bury anything recycled. But had we have not been able to acquire the eighty acres west, this probably would have not happened. It's not gonna shorten the life cycle of the landfill.
We can do this for them. This we don't have.
Exactly, those were the same questions. It'll um.
It's a weird, it's a weird concept because we bought more ground and it's profitable, but Boone's in the same thing we might be in in.
In seventy years, eighty years.
And you think it's that long? Wow.
Yeah, I've got the like cycle analysis I can show you.
That you could do, wow.
Yeah, we pay a company, both engineering to uh. Well, I'd say without it, it would have probably been a no. And Metro landfill, I think it's closer to Ames in Des Moines. But they chose to partner with us. And uh Metro, I think they've got a hundred plus years of availability of, you're buying airspace. It's how high you go is what the DNR regulates.
Yes. Wow, it's interesting.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, it's been in the works for several months and the Ames City Council um approved probably. Five months ago, let's say at. That's probably longer than that. It was like November meeting that to enter negotiations with our solid waste commission.
Wow. You know, on Friday I did grab jeans too. I grabbed mine and jeans. At Allen's.
Oh, okay, I was gonna, I only, I only walked out with one, one eight. They gave everybody got a free eight pack of beer. You had to go to Cherokee. But so, yeah, Mike walked out with his hands full.
I took yours. Thanks, Jim.
We're ready for you, buddy.
Ready for you. Go, you fire away.
Okay, um. Monday and Tuesday, uh Courtney gave me the bill for Maple River. That she had some question on and. When I looked at, I I knew what it was for, but it was awful extravagant bill. And after working with it, um. Was a fif- about fifty, two hundred dollars bill. And we got it down to eighteen hundred and eighty three dollars. Uh, they basically had a typo on their labor.
Forty seven hours instead of four point seven?
Forty three point five versus four point five on one individual. So that got straightened out and um. Uh, Tuesday, CCGP uh board meeting, uh most of that meeting was covered. Uh, it kind of was very much. In depth in regard to, I don't know if any of yous were aware, but. Green County had reached out to us and their economy had developed, bought jointed forces with us and maybe doing a merger. And uh they were also approached um. S- Story County. And. Uh, our group did put a presentation over, but they did uh pretty well. We're sold on Story County, which is gonna cost a lot more. Uh, we think that's probably not in their best interest, but that's where they decided to go, so. So we we talked a lot about. One other opportunity to come up like this. Because we think there's more of this gonna happen, and otherwise we're gonna wind up being a lone island out here if we don't join forces. So that was the most discussion on on that. Um, then Friday I did attend the chamber coffee and evidently I didn't stay long enough. And then Friday went to the S Center.
The hours started at eight forty five.
Um. Um. Went to Cherokee, uh, woke up there. We had a closed session in regard to an issue. Um, we talked about um. Doing some other types of finance or credits debit council. They're gonna do a VMO because we got some stuff that they try to buy and they can't. So we went and proved that. Uh, they did have nine or as up of Friday and the average for the month was ten point eight three. Uh, this week I have just basically the Farm Bureau meeting Tuesday night.
Uh, Monday, last week had a child Carol, Carol childcare board meeting, and we talked about some budget issues there. Um, had some fields and calls also on some roads. Talked to Zach about him. He's he's very good at taking care of all that stuff. I think we give everybody happy. Um. Attended the chamber copy also at Allen Distributing. This is uh Steph said it's a great crowd, great uh group. Um. Jim Allen did a nice job talking, very interesting to hear how that place started up seventy five years ago and what's evolved into today. Um. Uh, Tuesday, same thing. We got the Farm Bureau supper in Brita, and I plan on going to Chamber Coffee in Pella on Friday. All I have.
Zach, I did get a a really good compliment by you too this week, so. Finally, I mean, once in a while you hear some good stuff, you know?
Courtney, next week?
Right now I just have building.
Okay. Any comments from anybody in attendance or online?
I've seen nothing.
If not, motion to adjourn.
But.
I guess. Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, nine forty one.